I want to call it January 9, 2025. O'Fallon City Council Workshop Order. Rule call, Katie?
Mayor Hennessy?
Present.
Councilmember Smith?
She's excused.
Councilmember Epps?
He's excused.
Councilmember Hurwick?
Present.
Councilmember Thompson?
Present.
Councilmember Bibb?
Mark him in attendance when he arrives.
Councilmember Coskella?
Mark him in attendance when he arrives.
Councilmember Kewin?
Present.
Councilmember Adamire?
Present.
Councilmember Cook?
Present.
Councilmember Ragsdale?
Present.
All right. You have an agenda in front of you. What's the pleasure?
Motion to approve, Adamire.
Second, Ragsdale.
Motion by Councilman Adamire, second by Councilwoman Ragsdale. Questions or comments? On favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Anything on the agenda that you folks want to talk about? Seeing none. Workshop discussion items. No policies and procedures presentations.
Good evening, Council. Jay Haragat, the Assistant Director of Public Works. Tonight was originally supposed to be just a general overview and then a lot of detailed interviews from our supervisors. They were supposed to be here and I was going to show you how awesome they are. Well, they're actually being awesome right now because they're still working. So we've had crews going 24/7 since Saturday morning. And we'll begin again tonight at 7:00 as well. So you're stuck with me, which is probably bad.[106.14][106.14](Laughter). So I changed the presentation a little bit, give you more of a big picture view, and then talk a little bit about this most recent event. I would like to start off publicly thanking a lot of people and a lot of groups because there's a lot goes on behind the scenes that people don't see. First and foremost, I do want to thank the snow fighters. It is a tiresome job that they do 12 hours a day and with drive time, it could be 14 hours if they're away from their homes. And then they get home and then they got to do the same thing with their driveway. And their desire is unbelievable. Next to my supervisors, obviously. Those guys work 15 hours a day. We are on the phone at 4:30 in the morning, 4:30 in the afternoon, getting ready for the next shift, and they pretty much don't stop between then. And they've got about 22 years of experience between them averaging. So they're a phenomenal group of guys. Next is our office staff. The two people manning the phones and the one out helping us look at work orders have done a phenomenal job. That too is a thankless job. Unfortunately, everybody here in customer service knows, the person answering the phone is not the one that caused the issue, but the other one hearing about the issue. So it's much appreciated what they do. And I told them Steve's going to buy them a nice dinner, so they were great with that. PD, they obviously, before the events, they go out and help us get rid of cars that are on the streets. IT and communication, and IT and GIS does a lot of work with our iPads and trucks to get us eyes on the, from the office. And then communications, this year they've done a phenomenal job of getting the word out. While it wasn't perfect, it's probably the least amount of cars I've had seen on the street in a long time. There were quite a few, but it's a lot less than it was, so that is much appreciated. Lastly, I do want to thank the council. A lot of you do send kind words and it's much appreciated and they do see and appreciate it. And that stuff is expensive. And you guys continue to approve in the budget, so we do appreciate that and thank you. With that, I'm sure I forgot somebody and I truly apologize. You guys are awesome, too. So winter weather happens. We've got over 700 lane miles and approximately 1,200 cul-de-sacs. That number keeps going up, we just keep using these as averages. We have, in general, five call-in levels. Our winter patrol is mainly street employees. It's either three, six, nine, 12, or 15, depending on the event. It's either, if three is just people out and about watching the bridges and salt and is needed, 15 is if we think something's coming and we've got somebody in every route and every arterial. So the level one event, we've got 18 snow fighters. That is six individuals on arterials and collectors only, and then 12 individuals in the actual subdivisions themselves. And if a level two event is called, we will have another 12 to 14 come in, one person for each route. And the level three event, which we had this last one, it'll be another 12 people at a minimum that come in, which puts us at 42, 44 people, plus the three mechanics we have each shift. The goal, clear path one way, clear path two-way within two shifts from the storm ending. And that's a little misconceiving, or when we say clear path two-way, it's not clean pavement. It's for safety purposes, for emergency services to get into the subdivisions if they need to. So as long as there's two paths, two-way clear path, that's what we mean by that, within two shifts after the event. Then the cleanup phase, which we're currently still in, and then the repair mailboxes. Unfortunately, it does happen, so mailboxes do get hit, but we go out there after the event and give them temporary ones or make repairs or take the steps necessary to fix In general, this is how our city's laid out. We are 12 routes right now. I'll give you a little closer view here in a second. Each of those routes was based on mileage and cul-de-sacs somewhat, so that each route is somewhat equal and we send people out there. And what I highlighted here is one of our southern routes. As you can see, that's 45 miles. The rest of them are around 36 to 40, and that's only increasing. So next year, we're going to have to make one of two choices, either add another route, which then you need three more vehicles from the lower routes to move up, and then you need six more people from those lower routes to move up. Or we just make the routes bigger and maybe throw extra people in there to get those to keep them at 12. So the city keeps growing, we need to grow with it, and, but yeah, definitely next year we're going to make a decision which way we're going to go with that. Plowing order, we did this, I think, in the past two years. So for a level one event, one of our shifts is, we call them A, B, C. So within each route, it's three sub-routes. One shift will start on A and then go to B and then C, and then the next shift that comes in, they will go CBA. The reason for that is, we found if it's just one level and that one person starts in A and they get to B halfway through and then they're done, or the shift is over, if the next shift comes in and does the same thing, then C doesn't get touched for 24 hours. So when we flip that around and have them start on the opposite end, it seemed to help things out. And then for the events like this, A, B, and C each have one driver in them the whole This is how, so when I send out those updates and say this is the personnel layout's coming, this is what it generally looks like. In this particular month, day shift was orange, green shift was night. Level one has an A and a B. The A is the primary drivers. The B is the newer drivers that are in the trucks with them, trying to get a feel of how the truck works and jump in it when they start to get comfortable. We've found that that's better training than driving on the dry pavement, because you can drive all day on that dry pavement, but until you're actually in the truck feeling it and seeing what it looks like and see what happens when you can't see the road, it makes a big difference. But we can't do this alone. We, Street and Storms consists of 37 people. That's essentially a level one event. Once we start pulling in, I'll show that in a second, but water sewer, parks, engineering, ES, fleet, everybody pitches in when it comes to a bigger event, and it's much appreciated. Obviously, they have jobs too, but when it comes to snow, they throw the support behind this and it's appreciated. So a level two event, I took out the names, but this is essentially what I was talking about. There's no street employees on a level two. So once we get to that event where it's a couple inches of snow, we're pulling in other people to help out. Next is trucks. We currently have 15, 53 when currently working correctly. Four of those are tandems. We're currently getting two more tandems for the different, I think one's water and one's sewer. So once those come in, we'll have six tandems, which will go primarily in our arterial routes, which will free up some of our bigger, smaller, bigger trucks for the routes themselves. I always say, we're only as good as our forecasts, because things change. And we are always looking in the 15-day forecast. As soon as we get a blimp of something, we're starting to think about it and start for repair. And I just put this together for an event last, I think it was, this might have been two years ago. But for a week and a half, we've been thinking it's a one-to-three inch event. Four hours later, they start to say it's going to be a five-inch event. To most people, it's probably not a big deal, but when we've been preparing for one to three, that's 20 trucks. When they start throwing more in, that's nine to 12 more trucks we got to put together somehow in the next six hours. And then sure enough, six hours later, they increased it to five to seven. So yeah, we weren't, you can't put together every truck for every event, because this is not feasible, because those other groups are using them and they're doing other stuff during the year. So, and the ironic thing about this one, I don't think we even had three inches, so we just kept them how they were. Facilities, we have four current facilities where we keep salt at. The one is our main building, where salt and liquid and our fleet is located. The Fiesee facility, which is off of Fiesee, there is salt and liquid there. The third facility is down in O'Day Park. When that park was put in, we put in a salt building down there as well. So then we have a backup area at the lagoon. So we have two large tents down there. One is actually empty now, but we have a lot of excess storage there. So I wanted to show you a few things from our training manual that we talked to these drivers about. Each storm is different. You can't always assume you're going to use your salt, and you can't always assume your plow's going to be down, because everything's different. And so we don't want to give one specific direction, because it depends on the temperature, it depends on what's coming up and things like that. So each event is different and just listen to your supervisors. Cul-de-sacs, I'm sure a lot of you heard recently, a lot about cul-de-sacs. They are not fun to plow. Everything looks great on paper, but when you get out there, it is not fun or easy. So this is the direction we give to our drivers. If it's zero to four inches, we have them go towards the center of the cul-de-sac, because it keeps it away from the curbs, allows people to get in and out of their driveways better. Once we start to get four inches and bigger, we just need to get one pass in and out of there and then come back later and clean it correctly, because there's too much snow at that point to try and get it in the center and keep a clear path on the outside. And the reminder is always there, do not push snow in front of mailboxes, driveways, landscaping, or curb inlets, but as most of you know, that doesn't always get followed sometimes. This is one of the drawings we showed them, the most optimal places to put it. Each cul-de-sac is different. I was thinking about that today. It's kind of like your fingerprint. I don't think one's cul-de-sac's the same. So unless you're completely familiar with that subdivision, it's going to be a little bit different for each. Yeah, all the drivers have iPads, and we've gone ahead and marked where the most ideal place is for those snow piles in the cul-de-sacs. It's not exact and perfect, obviously. By looking at this one, it looks like it's, we're showing to put it in front of the driveway. The green area is right next to that, so that's what they're seeing in their cars, on their trucks. So here, Cherry picked a couple cul-de-sacs here to talk about. As you can see, there's driveways all over the place. There's only really only three places to put that material. And with an event like this, it's very difficult to even put them in those three, because when you think of a truck coming down, it's natural things that we push it towards the end of that cul-de-sac. So when we have to have them turn around and come back and push it the other way, it's just difficult with the turning motion and just getting enough room back there. So that is some of our problems with these bigger events, is getting that material to those locations. And this is probably the less favorite one is, we have no idea where to put this one.[818.12][818.12](Laughter). So there's a question mark.
You're a parking person?
The reality is, it could go there, but again, you're taking an entire cul-de-sac of 12 inches to that one spot. It's very...
Is that weather beat?
I think that's Country Shire. I think so. And in full disclosure, we are not perfect. This is where this 12 inches of snow does not go. Wish I could say this was another city we took this picture in, but it's not. We have been out there to correct the issue, though. And I did want to show what we consider normal in a plowing event of this size. It's very frustrating for the residents and we get it, but this is what it should look like on a straightaway with their driveways if we're doing it correctly. They should see that mound, and if we do it right, then we're done with it at this point, and they clean it out, that should be the only time we're by there, but that doesn't always happen. Sometimes we don't get it curb to curb right away and we're coming back and we're redoing the same thing. So it is frustrating for everybody. We do continue to have parked car issues, and I want to show you a few pictures of what happens when that, and these are from work orders that we got in the last few days to go out and look at this. But, so obviously, when the car's parked there, we'll go around it, but then they'll call us back out there to clean it. And when we do clean it, what we're doing is we're pushing that snow that's there in front of somebody else's driveway. So it's frustrating for the neighborhoods. And this particular one, I think, is Country Shire as well. There was a car parked there, and the way this one's designed, the driver couldn't see it right away, and so by the time they got there, they couldn't, there wasn't enough room for them to get around. So he literally had to back up at this location just to get back out of the cul-de-sac. What I do... And this one, as you see, the car is still there. With these, we're, the closest we're getting to that mailbox is seven to eight feet. It's just the way the plows move, so those do exist. So we do take every call, every email, every stop-in, and we've recorded those. So far, as of 8 o'clock this morning, we had 289 work orders recreated, and staff one way or another will go out and look at those and take pictures and get staff dispatched to those areas if they need to do some additional work. So far, we've got 20 mailboxes that need to be repaired, 35 sod damage, but we know that number's going to go up, because once it melts...
How do you know you have 35 sod damages when you can't even see the sod?
Well, they called us and said they did.
Huh?
They called us and said they did.
Whatever, okay.
So, and we do, we do this quite a bit, so I...
No, I understand, but with 12 inches of snow, I don't see how anybody sees any grass yet.
I don't see my grass.
Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Oh, go, jump in, because I'm flying through a lot of this, I apologize. Snow at the end of the driveway, we've had 114 of those we reviewed so far. General plowing request is 120. And I put this, just to put in perspective, the ES has 29,500 accounts. That doesn't mean there's 29,000 driveways, because there's, not every apartment or condo has a driveway, but, so we're looking at probably 27,000 driveways that are affected out there for each event. So yeah, we've got a lot of issues that were out there, but the big scheme of things, it's somewhat minor. Somebody asked some fun facts for me today from this past event. I'm not sure what their definition of fun is, but I decided to do it.
Had to be Machaca.[1051.04][1051.04](Laughter).
Had about eight hours of sleet mix, followed by 22 or so hours of snow with high intensity at times. 10 to 12 inches, what we think happened throughout the city with more sleet in the southern part of O'Fallon. Personnel hours since Saturday morning, I'm sorry, since, we were doing that week before that for brining, so since Thursday morning, we put in over 4,600 hours so far as staff members. Again, that's drivers, fleet, support, and that's not support staff, so... 2,700 to 3,000 tons of salt have gone down. Liquids, 60,000 gallons. And miles driven, almost, well, we probably went over that now, but close to 30,000. So this was a pretty big event, and actually, when we were putting this together, somebody found, the last time we did a similar presentation, it was about the same time, 11 years ago. So, and it was a 10-inch event, so I won't be here in 11 years to give this presentation We do have challenges, every event, and this is the biggest one in 11 years, and so there's challenges we know we have and we're going to work on. But just to talk about some of them, for this particular event, timing didn't help us when there was that late burst of snow right before it ended. The intensity gets us every time, because as soon as this truck goes down or gets out of its route, that, the snow just starts building up. And once it starts building up, not to use this pun, but it's a snowball effect, it just starts getting worse and worse. So we're really trying to get these guys to stay in their routes during these heavy snowfall events. Truck issues. We had two of our main big trucks go down on Saturday, Sunday? I'm sorry, I've lost track of days. Nobody came into work on Monday to these businesses, so there's no place for us to get those parts. But fleet did what fleet does, and they went to Pontu Beach to get one of the parts and then Jeff City to get the other one. So that is something that came up that we just weren't used to, is just not being able to get parts for things. The south, I brought that up just a little bit, the distance. So if you think about it, the best case scenario is you get half an hour to get down there and half an hour back. So that is just less time that those routes are getting than the other routes up north, just because of how far we are from them. There's ways to fix that, make the route smaller, send bigger trucks, things like, send more people. But that's just, that's just the nature of the beast with those southern routes right now. If something goes down with their truck, they lose a windshield wiper, they've got to come all the way back again, and it's even more time and mileage that they're not in the subdivision itself. Cul-de-sacs, again, every cul-de-sac is different, and they're just not easy. And when you get 12 inches, it just makes it worse, and it has to go somewhere. It's just, it's a tough situation. Technology, it's been great for us over the years, but when it doesn't work and there's glitches, it doesn't give us the ability to always see our trucks and where they have and haven't been. So it does happen, and it happens a few times on this event. It's one of our challenges we need to work on as well. Experience levels. So when I talk about that event 11 years ago, there's probably only a handful of people, wow, I think there's about 15 people from our division still here that were there then. So that, you put the numbers together, if we have 100 people in, that's 85% of our staff has never seen an event like this. And some of our newer staff, that's probably 80% haven't seen anything over three inches, four inches. So again, it looks, everything looks good on paper, but once you get out there in that truck and start pushing around, it becomes very difficult. And parked cars, again, it just adds to the problems. And we are not done yet, so cross your fingers we'll have less than they hope, but yeah, we're looking for another one to three inches tonight and tomorrow. With that, that's the overview.
Nathan?
That's upgraded to like nine inches now. You haven't looked at your phone last hour?[1308.54][1308.54](Laughter).
Jim?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Hey, Jay, I just want to, on behalf of the council and the rest of us, you guys did a great job, so it's an ugly battle, we know that you've done. And honestly, the feedback I've got from most of the residents has been really good. They've been really understanding. You know, you've got a few people who say, oh yeah, why does my driveway get plowed in? Well, obviously, you know, it is what it is. So I know you guys have been working tirelessly, you know, for days on end, so just tell them all thank you.
I appreciate that, thank you.
Mr. Hurwick?
Yeah. Same thing, Councilman Adamire said, yeah, thank you to you, to the whole staff, everybody who's involved in this, from guys driving the truck, to the persons answering the phone, to fleet for going to get those parts. I mean, from my perspective, incredible job. I mean, this was an extraordinary, you know, rare event. Like you said, last time, it's been 11 years, I remember that one, you know, cold, early January, makes it even tougher. And I did want to share, a resident who sent me a note, who lives in a court, who always contacts me every year, Burlington Court, she wanted to let the snow crew know that they did an awesome job on her court. She greatly appreciated it. She wanted to pass on, I don't know if you know the driver, but she said the driver was the best and he worked and worked until it was done right. So thank you to that driver and thank you to the whole crew for everything you guys do.
Thank you.
Really appreciate it. And for those who, you know, complain, just a little patience on an event like this, that's all you need, just a little patience. Everything will get done, just takes time.
Debbie?
Thank you. You guys did a great job, but I did have to put a work order in today, because I kept a few phone calls and people were complaining they haven't gotten their mail for five days. It's not just you guys, it's, I don't think the mail is running even in some certain areas. So it's not just, you know, but I did put a work order, and I told them that I would, hopefully you guys can just make a swing by and clean up a few areas.
And that's a fair point. I didn't talk about that a little bit. So when we talk about two-way clear path, that is not curb to curb. So it's about 20 feet, maybe 22 feet. So when you've got one foot of snow pushed against that high, you're already at three to four feet. So if we take that last two feet, we're going even higher into their driveway, they've already cleaned out three times. So a lot of times, we don't, once we get to that point, we're getting more calls about stop, honestly. So we can't get every mailbox, but we do try.
No. And Debbie, they did not deliver mail Monday, Tuesday, or today. I did get the mail yesterday because of Carter, yeah. But yeah. So they've only been out one, one time this week, so...
Of course, the people are complaining. But they're blaming it on the, on our crew, but really, it's the post office.
It's post office, they couldn't get out.
Right, exactly.
Do any of you guys get anything other than bills in your mail anyways? I've been excited to not get...[1505.04][1505.04](Laughter).
You mean junk mail?
Lisa?
Thank you. I just have a quick question. I grew up in Iowa, and my parents said that when we lived up there, it was required that the residents clear the sidewalks in front of their houses by the city. Is that a thing in O'Fallon?
Yes.
Oh, see, I should know that, but now I do. Okay, so if you have a sidewalk in your yard, you have, you're supposed to clear it?
Correct.
Cool.
No, we don't, we don't clear it. City won't clear it.
No, that's what I meant. The residents are supposed to clear it.
Anything else for Jay? Again, Jay, and I know not everything's perfect, but the numbers that you showed with only, you know, that many calls for service for that many homes, you guys did one heck of a job.
Thank you. Again, I appreciate you guys' support. Thank you all.
Look forward to tomorrow.[1572.54][1572.54](Laughter). All right. Any other items of consideration? Seeing none. Make the motion go to closed session. 610-0211, legal action, cause of action litigation involving a public governmental body and any confidential or privileged communication between a public governmental body or its representative and its attorneys. 610-0212, leasing, purchasing, or sale of real estate. 610-0213, hiring, firing, discipline, and promotion of employees. 610-02112, sealed bids and related documents until the bids are opened, and sealed proposals and related documents or any documents related to negotiated contract until a contract is executed where all proposals are rejected.
So will Kewin?
Second, Adamire. Motion by Councilman Kewin, second by Councilman Adamire. Rule call, Katie?
Councilmember Cook?
Yes.
Councilmember Bibb?
Yes.
Councilmember Kewin?
Yes.
Councilmember Hurwick?
Yes.
Councilmember Ragsdale?
Yes.
Councilmember Coskella?
Yes.
Councilmember Thompson?
Yes.
Councilmember Adamire?
Yes.
Yes, we'll be in the community room at 6:05. Want to call it January 9, 2025. O'Fallon City Council meeting in order. Rule call, Beth?
Mayor Hennessy?
Present.
Councilmember Smith?
She's excused.
Councilmember Epps?
He's excused.
Councilmember Hurwick?
Present.
Councilmember Thompson?
Present.
Councilmember Bibb?
Present.
Councilmember Coskella?
Yes.
Councilmember Kewin?
Present.
Councilmember Adamire?
Present.
Councilmember Cook?
Present.
Councilmember Ragsdale?
Present.
If anyone would please stand for the invocation by Brandon Keesling, Associate Pastor of First Baptist Church of O'Fallon, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance, led by Councilmember Hurwick.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Let's pray together. Father, we thank you for this night, we thank you for the chance to gather, and again, due to the business of this great city, and we're thankful for the many who have been serving faithfully over the last couple of days specifically during this snowstorm. I thank you for keeping them safe and for all the work that they've done for our citizens. And I just pray for tonight, that you'd be with us in this place and help us to honor you in all that we say and do. It's in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Folks, you have an agenda in front of you, what's the pleasure?
Motion approved, Q.
Second, Coskella. Motion by Councilman Q, and second by Coskella. Questions or comments? On favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Few things on the Presiding Officer's Report. First of all, I just want to welcome everybody to a great 2025. And again, you know, as Brandon said, with the snowstorm that we had this past, this week, I want to give our kudos to our street department and our first responders and everybody else who had to brave that, brave the 12 inches of snow. And, you know, did we do everything correctly? No, but let me tell you what, these guys busted their heinies off and got our streets cleared. So, I just want to, Steve, if you would give our thanks to those folks, we appreciate it. Presiding Officer's Report. Chief, we got some new officers.
You know, I love to be up here so much, I tried to bribe some of the Dare kids to do this for me tonight. They told me no. So, we have 4 officers introduced tonight to Team O'Fallon.
Mitchell Dade.
Our first officer is Officer Mitchell Dade, who grew up on the south side of O'Fallon in the Royal Springs neighborhood. He's the youngest of 3 boys, all of which taken up service roles in their community. One serves as a youth counselor and the other as an elementary teacher in the city of St. Louis. Officer Dade is joined tonight by his mother, Mary Pat, and his father, Mike. Officer Dave attended Immaculate Conception School in Darton Prairie from kindergarten through 8th grade and went on to graduate from St. Dominic High School in 2019. He attended St. Charles Community College for 2 years where he studied criminal justice. Officer Dade has been employed by the Cityville, O'Fallon Police Department as a confinement officer for 3 years prior to attending the police academy. Officer Dade is a recent graduate of the Eastern Missouri Police Academy, Class 224, and was a part of the department's recruit sponsorship program. Officer Dade is both excited and honored to begin his career of service to the community he grew up in and remains a part of. I'd like to welcome Officer Mitchell Dade to Team O'Fallon.
I'll keep it pretty short and sweet, I just want to thank Chief Menini, Mayor Hennessy, everybody in front of me, it's really an honor to be here and it's an honor to serve this community. Lived here all 24 years of my life, so it's really just, I'm excited to serve everybody behind me as well, and it's, it's really just an honor, so thank you very much.
And next, we're going to have Officer Tanner Swafford come on down. Oh, we're looking at everybody. Officer Tanner Swafford has lived in the O'Fallon community his entire life. He has one older brother who's a firefighter, paramedic here in O'Fallon. Officer Swafford attended Fort Zumwalt West High School and graduated early in December 2019 to leave for the Marine Corps in February of 2020. While in the Marine Corps, Tanner was a motor transport operator and was deployed to Saudi Arabia. Tanner served 4 years before getting out in February of 2024 and then attended the Eastern Missouri Police Academy, Class 224. Tanner ended up getting sponsored by our department, our department's sponsorship program in late August, and is thrilled to start his long, exciting career ahead. Tonight, he's joined by his mother, Kim, and?
Brother Jerry.
Brother Jerry. Welcome to Team O'Fallon, Tanner.
Thank you. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I just want to say thank you for giving me this opportunity to serve your community. I'm excited and I can't wait. Thank you, guys.
Officer Zachary Oderman moved to O'Fallon in 2003 when he was 4 years old and has called O'Fallon home ever since. Officer Oderman attended and graduated from Fort Zumwalt West High School in 2017. In his spare time, he enjoys being in nature, playing video games, and most of all, spending time with his 2 sons. Officer Oderman comes to us from the St. Louis Metropolitan Police Department after spending 3 years as a police officer. During those 3 years, Officer Oderman has set his foundation of skills which will better help serve the citizens and visitors of O'Fallon. Officer Oderman is accompanied by his girlfriend, Brooke, his oldest son, Brody, youngest son, Noah, and Brian, who's Brooke's father. Welcome to Team O'Fallon. All right, just like to take this moment to thank Chief Menini, Mayor Hennessy, City Council, and the great city of O'Fallon for affording me the opportunity to be here. Look forward to serving the community and everything that comes with it. Thank you. Officer Holmes is joined tonight by his wife, Carrie, who he's been married to for 11 years, and also his 2 boys, Isaac and Jacob. Officer Holmes was born in Albany, New York and moved to St. Louis in 2008. He attended high school at John F. Kennedy Catholic High School. Officer Holmes then attended college at St. Louis University and finished with a bachelor's degree from the University of Missouri-St. Louis. Officer Holmes also served in the Army National Guard from 2011 to 2017. Officer Holmes graduated from the St. Louis County Municipal Police Academy in 2016 and was employed with the St. Louis County Police Department from that time until December of 2025 before continuing his career with the best department on earth, the O'Fallon Police Department. In his spare time, he enjoys playing indoor soccer, training in Brazilian Jiu-Jitsu, and playing board games with his family. Welcome to Team O'Fallon.
Thank you, Chief, Mayor, and the board. I'm excited to be here, everybody's been so welcoming, I'm just thrilled to continue my career with O'Fallon, so thank you.
Thanks, sir. What most of you don't know is when they get sworn in, they basically tell them they have to come up here and do a dance or sing before they, before, in front of the council, so, welcome, everybody.
Hello, everyone. My name is Jay Ottemeyer, I'm workforce city council, but I also have the opportunity to be the council representative for the Dare program. So, for those of you guys who do not know what the Dare program is, it's not just about drugs, it's about respect, it's about courtesy, but most important, in my opinion, along with that, is the kids have an opportunity to, an opportunity to bond and to get to know a police officer very well. So, Officer Dave, why don't you come up here for a second? He loves when I bring him up here, so. We are very blessed in this community to, to have the Dare program. Not every community has the opportunity to have a Dare program, so, and these kids, if you get an opportunity to see these 5th graders that are excited about not doing drugs, they're excited about being respectful, they're about, they're excited about making a relationship with a police officer. So, a lot of communities just don't have that. So, we are very blessed, we're very blessed with Officer Dave, they, they love him to death. And it's, it's a great, great program. I can't, I can't say it enough that how, how good this program really is. So, that being said, let me tell you about how it kind of works. So, each of these Dare readers today were selected by their particular peers in their, in their schools, in their classes. So, what happens is then, out of all the classes in that, that group, each, each of these Dare readers come up there and they, I don't want to say compete, but they get to read their Dare essays in front of the entire school. So, it's kind of a nerve-wracking situation where you're in front of the entire school of your peers and you're reading this Dare essay. So, we select 1 out of each of those schools that they, their essay was, was heads and tails, or it was very good compared to the rest. They're all great readers, but each of these readers today has been selected out of all their individual schools. So, it's, it's very, it's a very nice honor, and each of these young ladies today are going to get an opportunity to read their Dare essay for you. So, Officer Dave, do you have anything to say about that, or are we good?
Oh, no. I agree.
Yeah, I know, so. So, without further ado, and, and this is for MG Elementary School, Skylar. Come on up. Skylar, would you like to bring your parents or friends or anything like that up here?
Uh, 1 person.
Parent, come up. Oh, no? Okay, gotcha.
My best friend, Tegan.
Oh. You can bring her up?
Tegan.
Friend, Mona? I'm going to put you on the spot, Tegan.
Dear myself, my name is Skylar, I'm 11 and I like to hang out with friends. I'm a kind, positive, and caring person. I'm good at cheering my friends up when they are down with my sense of humor. I feel that doing the Dare program in 5th grade is very important. It plants a seed in our minds for when we are older. In middle school, I'm going to make a good impression, good first impression by being in many clubs, getting homework done on time, and getting good grades, but not working myself too hard to the point where I'm too exhausted to do anything else, because no one should work themselves too hard to the point where they're too tired to do anything. In high school, I want to be a leader who's involved in clubs and sports. One example of a sport in the future in cheerleading is cheerleading, which requires dedication to the sport itself. And doing drugs will affect that ability. After high school, I plan to go to college and become a teacher. I would also like to travel in my free time. In the Dare program, I've learned how to say no to drugs without any difficulty. If one of my friends were peer pressuring me to do drugs, I'd say no and walk away. If it keeps happening repeatedly, repetitively, I would still be nice to them, but I would not be friends with them because they might be a bad influence on me and my life choices. It is important to understand making good choices because one bad decision can change an entire life. Learning about peer pressure, confident communications, risks and consequences, dealing with stressful situations, and being helpful is important to me because it'll change my life forever, because now I know these, that, I know that these things, I can use them when I'm older if I ever need to. I promise to be drug-free because I've seen people in my family struggle with these things, and it hurts to lose a loved one because of drug-related death. Sincerely, Skylar. P.S., if I do drugs in the future, I will try my hardest to get help as fast as I can.
Good job. Let's hear it again for Skylar Smith. She did a great job. All right, our next Dare reader from Twin Chimneys Elementary School is Sadie Sotheamire. Sadie, come on back. And Sadie, who do you have with you today?
Um, I have my dad, my little brother, and my mom. Hello, my name is Sadie Sotheamire, I'm 11 years old and I'm in 5th grade. I love to create things, spend time with my family, dance, teach, and help others. I have 7 people in my family, my mom, my dad, my 14-year-old sister, Brielle, who's not here today, but she's at volleyball practice, and my 7-year-old brother, Easton. I also have 2 dogs. I have a brown and white, small Chihuahua, Pablo, and a medium black and white, mixed Bailey. I live in Darton Prairie, Missouri. My family being on time, my dogs being kind, academics living a good, fun life, having a good group of friends and being a good friend are all important to me. I also believe my strengths are helping others, getting good grades, and doing well in sports. In Dare, I learned resistance strategies, the importance of not using drugs, and why, some ways to help with making decisions that are best for me, and about the quote, "If you see something, say something." I think it's so important for 5th graders to participate in the Dare program because it could actually save someone's life. For example, so many people die from drugs, but Dare teaches you to not do drugs and gives you great reasons for it. Also, Dare helps you know what you should do if you're in a situation where there are people wanting you to do drugs or are doing drugs, so you can stay away from those situations. Beat your plans. When I think about middle school, I want to play volleyball, basketball, soccer, and do dance or cheer. Some possibilities for clubs, I want to participate in our arts club, VACs club, the National Junior Honor Society, and maybe yearbook club and student council. In addition to that, in high school, I want to try out for volleyball, soccer, and basketball. The clubs I'm thinking about doing include both leadership and art clubs in high school. In both middle school and high school, I want to get good grades and try my best. I want people to see me as a kind and helpful person who cares about their friends, family, and education, and I don't want this reputation just in middle school and high school, but throughout my entire life. After graduating high school, I want to go to college and get a job. I know my job will have something to do with leadership, and an option that goes under that category would be a teacher. I still really like helping people, and that job would be perfect for that. Living drug-free. Living a drug-free life is very important to me and my future because I don't want to harm myself. Also, I usually stay away from the people that smoke when I can or try not to breathe in that air, and also, and I don't want to have that bad reputation because of drugs. I also don't want to let my family down or potentially give them or anyone death from secondhand smoke. Being involved in drug abuse would affect my future by making me potentially die or get hurt. Drug abuse could also affect my future by making me have more colds, upper respiratory problems, heart disease, lung cancer, yellow teeth, and more. One fact I learned that will help me to make the decision to be drug-free was that there are 178,000 alcohol-related deaths and 480,000, wait, 480,000 tobacco-related deaths each year, and I don't want to be one of them. Also, a skill I learned that will help me stay drug-free is to stay away from the people that do drugs and the places that I know often, that I know often have people that commonly do that. Handling pressure. One way we can avoid handling, we can avoid negative peer pressure is to stay away from the people that negatively pressure you. If you ever run into peer pressure, you could follow, like, the Dare decision-making model to help you make, in making the right decision. D is for define. Describe the problem, challenge, or opportunity. A is for assess. What are your choices? R is respond. Make a choice. Use the facts and information you have gathered. And lastly, E, evaluate. Review your decision. Did you make a good choice? Also, some consequences of making poor choices could be getting hurt, someone else getting hurt, getting in trouble at home, or maybe even going to jail. My pledge, I promise to live a drug-free life, not just for me and my health, but for my family and future too. Thank you for listening to my essay, and stay drug-free.
One more round of applause for Sadie Sotheamire. All right, last but not least, Jane, can you come on? Bring your family members.
This is my dad, my brother Charlie, my mom, my friend Ava who came, and my principal, Dr. Fay.
Who's that guy over there?
Dear myself, my name is Jane Merrill, and I'm an 11-year-old 5th grader who has a few things I really like. For one, I'm obsessed with art and everything about it. I'm also pretty good, if I say so myself. Another thing I spend a lot of time doing is reading. For me, reading is something fun, but it's also kind of a safe place. Reading is somewhere to go when you have to stay where you are, somewhere with oceans, trees, heroes, caves, castles, and dragons. I also really enjoy swimming, and I'm on a swim team at the YMCA. I also love music in general, and I'm really enjoying choir this year. When I think about middle school and high school, I'd really like to continue with choir. I also think I would like theater. I've always loved acting, and something my brother's in that seems really cool to me. It's called Care Club. Care Club is a club where you do nice things. For example, once they painted rocks with happy messages and put them in the middle school garden. I want to be the kind of person that people trust and want to be around. I also hope that high school has things like Care Club. After high school, I plan to serve a mission for my church, which is where you go for 18 months and serve others and teach them about our religion. After that, I'm going to go to college and I think I might want to be a teacher. I also think being an author would be cool. All of this will not be possible if I don't do the things that Officer Dave has taught me in Dare. Dare is important because not only does it teach you about not doing drugs, but also about bullying and other important things for life. Dare has taught me how to stay drug-free, avoid peer pressure, deal with stressful situations, and more. I'm avoiding peer pressure by hanging out with good people. I may not be super popular, but I have some good friends that I can count on. I pledge to be drug-free because I want to be able to accomplish my dreams. I want to listen and care about others. I want to love my family and cherish them forever. This is why I'll stay drug-free. Sincerely, Jane.
Sincerely, Jane. P.S. I love quotes, so here's one that fits in well. Darkness cannot drive out darkness, only light can do that. Hate cannot drive out hate, only love can do that. Martin Luther King Jr.
Next, I'd like to have a motion to ratify my appointment of Chris Hunt from a non-voting member to the member-at-large, Ward 1, on the Historic Preservation Committee, with the term expiring in April of 2027.
Ragsdale, so moved.
Cook.
Motion by Councilwoman Ragsdale, signed by Councilwoman Cook. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Next, I'd like to have a motion to ratify my appointment of Arturo Hernandez to serve on the Historic Preservation Commission as a non-voting member, Ward 2, filling the remainder of an unexpired term until April of 2026.
So moved, Hurwicke.
Ragsdale.
Motion by Councilwoman Hurwicke, second by Ragsdale. Questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Next, I'd like to have a motion to ratify my appointment of Janet Watkins to serve on the Historic Preservation Committee, Commission as a non-voting member with the term expiring into April of 2027.
Ragsdale.
Motion by Councilwoman Ragsdale, second.
Cook.
Second by Councilwoman Cook. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. That is it on citizens' comment, or President Officer's report? Citizens' comments.
Citizens' comments, that's it. You said we're done. That's it.
We're done, we're done with citizens' comments? Okay. Mr. Deanoff.
Thank you very much, members of the City Council. My name is RNC AC Deanoff, city public advocate and running for City Council, Ward 1. First of all, I want to wish everybody a Happy New Year in 2025. Thank you for all the hard work of our city, county, and state snowfighters, and we all need to pray for Los Angeles County and the over 10,000 families that are affected by the fires. The first issue that I'd like to address is a conditional use permit for a telecommunications monopole tower in Monticello Plaza. I would like the council to address the fencing issue. These companies are formed LLCs with zero assets. If they go belly-up or bankrupt or a new technology comes about, we're going to be stuck with that tower for decades to come. So I would ask that you put a bond or a line of credit or a letter of financial responsibility on the condition, as a conditional use permit for the applicant. The fall zone, the fall zone is a major condition, a major concern with the addition of the outbuildings within Monticello Plaza. On your agenda tonight is a hidden agenda under the consent agenda, which is really weird because it's usually at the end of the meeting with all the other resolutions, but it ended up with a consent agenda for a four, fourth-year 2022 agreement for public relations, and it's for our Economic Development Department in the amount of $45,000. First of all, we're a designation. We're somebody that business wants to come and do commerce because of the salaries and the education of St. Charles County and especially O'Fallon. We have a five-member Economic Development Team with an Economic Development Director making $122,000. That department costs taxpayers $750 to $1 million to operate. In addition, we have four employees in Communications Department with a Communications Manager. We have two Public Relations Employees with a Director, a Webmaster, and a Communication Specialist. It's buried in other departments. And we have a hidden position in the IT Department for a, a IT Business Systems Analysis making $80,000. And so why in the world are we contracting out Public Relations for Economic Development when we have all these employees and we keep grooming our city government? It makes no sense. When it comes to the resolution on the agenda for $345,000 for engineering services, for the lift station upgrade design, why are we not doing this in-house with our over 12
You have 10 seconds.
engineers in the Public Works Division of the Engineering Division of Public Works? It just makes no sense why we don't bring that in-house.
Mr. Deanoff, your time is up, sir. As all the citizens' comments that we have. Ward reports, Ward 2.
Thank you, Mayor. I first want to thank all of the snowfighters for all of the work and hard, hard work and hours that they've put in this last week. I know it couldn't have been easy, so thank you. And the other thing I wanted to say was that I, I see that it's National Law Enforcement Appreciation Day today, so just wanted to thank everybody at the OPD and welcome our four new officers to the great city of O'Fallon. Thank you.
Mr. Hurwicke.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Happy New Year to everybody, and I'd like to also congratulate and welcome the four new officers to the city of O'Fallon, and it's pretty cool to see that three of these young men actually are O'Fallon residents. They have O'Fallon blood in them, and they want to continue to serve O'Fallon, you know, for the rest of their life, hopefully. So, good job, chief. Keep finding good young men and women that, you know, are O'Fallon residents or local residents and that want to continue to serve us, so. That's all, sir.
Ward 3.
Thank you, Mayor. I also would like to welcome the four new officers. Seems like they're getting younger and younger, or I'm getting older? Not really sure. And none of them were hockey players this time, so I'm glad that you've widened your pool of prospects and are just looking for good people rather than only hockey players. A little bit of good to the city. I went to lunch today at Mr. Golden, not Ward 3, but here in O'Fallon, and absolutely enjoyed my, my lunch. The owner came out and asked me how the food was and how the service was. An awesome business, and I look forward to them being here for a long time. Nothing else for me.
Mr. Bev.
Thank you, Mayor. Happy New Year to everybody. I'm sure everyone's enjoying the, the freezing cold snow, so I just want to invite everyone to a, a real fun opportunity to raise money for the Special Olympics coming up on February 1st. There's a team O'Fallon right now for the county. We're in second place, and funds raised only by $10, so we could easily end up slipping into third. So please come out, join us, jump in the lake, and raise some money for the Special Olympics. Thank you, Mayor.
Ward 4.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd also like to say welcome to our new four new officers. Particularly, I noted that two of them are from Fort Somawell West High School. And talk about feeling old, Steve. One of the new officers was probably in the graduating class, my oldest, Alex Kewen, and the other was probably in the graduating class with my second-oldest, Sean Kewen. So, how's that for old? I'd also like to echo the mayor's earlier comments that city staff, man, we got dumped 12 inches of snow in this city, and they did a fantastic job cleaning up. Obviously, it wasn't perfect, but that's a lot of snow. I mean, a lot of snow. Let's just say this, my street was cleared long before the guy that I paid to shovel my driveway showed up. So, I was pretty impressed. And I've been, I've been around St. Peter's today, and let me tell you, our streets are a lot clearer than theirs are. So, kudos to city staff. You guys do a great job, and I'm so proud to be a citizen of O'Fallon. Thank you.
Mr. Ottemar.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's a great day to live, work, play, and pray in the city of O'Fallon, and I'd like to wish everybody a Happy New Year also. I'm going to go down the line. And the police officers, hey, we get absolutely phenomenal police officers here in the city of O'Fallon, and great job, chief. Looks like you, you've got another great recruiting class there. So, we look forward for them to be serving us. And Steve, Jeff, they're not getting any younger, just saying. So, besides that, I would like to congratulate again our, our city staff, our snow warriors. Love that saying. They've done a great job, and thank you very much for the, to the residents out there. I have gotten very little, if any, complaints about the snow removal. I think everybody was very patient. They understood this is a very, this is an event that does not happen very often. We're, the Midwest and especially here in O'Fallon and St. Louis, we're not used to this amount of snow, and it, it tributes to the hard work and efforts of our, our staff that they're able to handle this and get businesses back and get everything back and flowing. Obviously, we had a packed room here tonight, so everybody's out on the streets and enjoying and, and stimulating the economy. So, thank you very much. Ottemar out.
Ward 5.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I also would like to welcome the four new officers to team O'Fallon, the greatest city around, and thank you to all of our snow warriors, but I also want to thank Chief Manini and the Police Department. When I was out, stupidly, on Monday, I saw many of the police officers having to shovel drivers out when they were making turns where perhaps they should not have. So, I think that is a testament to how great our officers do because that really is not in their job description to shovel somebody out, so thank you for that. And I want to say this morning, on my way to work, I had the opportunity to go to Texmo, had some hot tea on my way to work this morning, and if you haven't heard, they are now across street from City Hall in the old Alpha and Omega building, Good News Brewery, but they are now open here in just across street, and we're very excited to have them on this side of town.
Ms. Cook.
Thank you. I will not repeat what everybody said. I will just say ditto, and everybody, Happy New Years.
Thank you.
Next is city administrator's report. Mr. Snowden.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to take a moment to acknowledge the contributions of some staff members who are reaching milestone anniversaries. Street maintenance worker Tim Smith, utility worker Joe Vandembosh, and police officer Brian Wilcox have all been with O'Fallon for 10 years now. Police officer Larry Bunt has been with us for 25 years. Last but not least, Police Major Derek Myers and Police Officer Scott Young have both served our citizens for 30 years. I'd like to thank all six of these individuals for being a part of team O'Fallon, and interestingly, I don't often get to do this, but one of those just mentioned is in the back of the room. So, Police Officer Scott Young, congratulations on your 30 years of working with us. It's always nice to hear from our citizens. This time, John and Karen Link wrote a note to say that they wanted to compliment our crew on the beautiful job they did on repairing the sidewalks. Obviously, this note is from before this week. Mr. and Mrs. Link wrote that the sidewalks have a nice finish to them and are level, and the team that came out was friendly and worked hard, so thanks to John and Karen for pointing out the great job our street crew did. As we all know and have heard, there was a little snowstorm that occurred over the weekend and into Monday morning. I wanted to give just a few statistics about the storm and our response. In town, we received between 10 and 12 inches of snow, depending on the location. By the way, that equals more than 4 million cubic feet of snow on our streets alone. Our plow crews drove 29,949 miles and laid down nearly 3,000 tons of salt during the collective 4,600 hours they've worked over the week leading up to the event and its aftermath. The Police Department handled 246 snow-related calls, mostly stranded motorists, but thankfully only wrote six accident reports. And lastly, Volunteer Services asked me to mention that the MLK Day of Service takes place on January 20th and honors Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King, his life and teachings through service projects, and it's created a sense of community and shared responsibility. For many years, Volunteer O'Fallon has been proud to offer the opportunity to craft paper carnations and Valentine cards for O'Fallon's senior care facility residents and share in an act of kindness that brings the community together. Annually, we've been able to give more than 600 seniors a Valentine gift with the reminder that their community cares. If you're interested in helping on the 20th, please reach out to Volunteer Services. And that's all I have for tonight, sir.
Thanks, sir. This brings to old business, brings to Bill 7707. Motion for second reading by title only. Hurwicke. Mr. Councilman Hurwicke, second.
Thompson.
Senator Councilman Thompson, all in favor?
Aye.
Impose. Mr. O'Keefe.
Bill number 7707, second reading and consideration for adoption. An ordinance granting a conditional use permit to SBA Communications to allow wireless telecommunications facility monopole under certain conditions on a certain tract of land located at 3740 Monticello Plaza Drive within the city of O'Fallon, Missouri.
Thank you. Most final passage. Hurwicke. Mr. Councilman Hurwicke, second.
Thompson.
Senator Councilman Thompson, questions or comments on Bill 7707? Seeing none, council members, please cast your vote.
The voting's now closed.
Eight yes, zero no. Bill 7707 passed, becomes ordinance number?
7170.
7170?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, ma'am. Questions, comments on committee and commission reports? Stand as read. Question or comments on the consent calendar?
Motion to approve.
Second, Kewen. Mr. Councilman Hurwicke, second, and Councilman Kewen. Council members, please cast your vote.
The voting's now closed.
Eight yes, zero no. The consent calendar's been approved. Next, under new business, we have a unified public hearing and comment to consider approval and ordinance of rezoning from C2 General Business District to C2 General Business District Sports Tourism Overlay District, consider approval of an ordinance granting a conditional use permit to allow banquet hall, to consider approval of an ordinance granting a conditional use permit to allow indoor recreation, and to consider an approval of an ordinance granting a conditional use permit to allow food truck park. Is there someone here to present this?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. My name's Josh Barkus with Stock and Associates Consulting Engineers. I'm here on behalf of Andy Patel, who's the owner and developer related to these items. The first item is regarding the rezoning of the property. This property is the northeast corner of Wingfoot Drive and Veterans Memorial Parkway, and then the southwest corner of Veterans Memorial Parkway and Thornbury Crossing. The rezoning, as outlined in the staff report at the planning commission level, is justified due to the proposed use of the site. The subject property is partially adjacent to other commercial uses, which is consistent with the area where adjacent to residential users, adequate buffer is required and provided. All necessary services are provided to the site. The zoning of the parcels to the C2 Sports Tourism Overlay is required by the city code due to the proposed land uses. The proposed zoning is consistent with the surrounding and/or would not have any negative impact on the surrounding land uses. Approval of the rezon would be consistent with the city's adopted development policies and the comprehensive plan, and the subject property is designated as suitable for retail use on the future land use map on the city's comprehensive plan. And here is just a snippet from that city's comprehensive plan. This is the site that the hotel is planned to be upon. This is the larger parcel that is part of the preliminary plat with seven outlots, showing that the medical office, hotel, and neighborhood retail was a planned portion of this area. This is just a quick site plan relative to the hotel site, showing how it's laid out along Veterans Memorial Parkway, along Wingfoot Drive, along with the buffer along the eastern side. And then this is the site plan that includes the indoor sports facility, which is one of the conditional uses, which is on the larger lot, what we call Lot 1. The second conditional use permit is related to the food truck and Bourbon Garden, which is located here at the Justice Center Drive and Bryan Road. And then the banquet hall, I'm sorry, that's also located in the same larger building on one of the levels. And if there's any questions related to any of the items, I'd be happy to answer them.
Questions for Josh on any of the conditional use permits or the rezoning? You would step aside? Now, this, Mr. Deanoff, just to let you know, this is about the conditional use permits and the rezoning only.
Can you say it one more time?
This is about the three conditional use permits and the rezoning. This has nothing to do with the site plan, sir.
Gotcha. First of all, I'm for this plan only, but I will be opposed if the city council offers Chapter 100 funding, Chapter 353 funding, Chapter 357 funding, to the developer through the revised state statutes. If the city offers tax abatement over 20 to 30 years for this project, I will be opposed to it. This owner is well off to do. He can afford the property on his own. He did on the property that's located on Missouri Highway K. K. If you issue industrial revenue bonds, which the city owns the property and leases it back to the owner, that would be also wrong and an abuse of the state law. If there's any creation of the Community Improvement District, Neighborhood Improvement District, or Transportation Development Districts, that'll be one cent additional sales tax for every district created, and I'd be opposed to taxing our residents once again. So, no city or county subsidies in this deal. When it comes to the development, for example, there's a big traffic issue with the conditional use permit that needs to be addressed. I've experienced, along with our police vehicles, and the police chief can attest, it takes seven to 12 minutes to make a left-hand turn onto northbound Bryan Road. By placing additional traffic at this location is going to cause a safety issue. This is our second busiest traffic corridor of the city and requires no left turns and only right in and right outs. Anything else would be a public safety issue and would be a detriment to the traffic safety of our residents and people visiting our city. I also would like to see a deceleration-acceleration lane as part of the conditional use permit and made as part of the condition, and I think that that's only proper to do. When it comes to the amphitheater with the conditional use permit, I believe it's on the wrong part of the parcel. As you've all been reading, national news in Las Vegas and New Orleans, people are getting crazy out there, and they want to do harm to people for no reason without even knowing them or having any type of motive. And I think that's very wrong. And I think that there needs to be balances and there needs to be appropriate safety regulations for the rezoning and the conditional use permit at this property for the amphitheater. Also, I'd like to see the developer for the rezoning and conditional use permit, that they give up some impact fees, because we're going to have to make safety improvements and safety enhancements.
You have 15 seconds.
Especially if there's going to be a traffic light at this location. We need to make those safety improvements, and it's going to be caused mostly by the developer, and they need to be part of the equation. So, I'm for the project, but if you issue any incentives, I'll be opposed to the project. Thank you.
Thank you. No other speakers? Josh, you have anything else?
No, sir. Thank you.
All right. Any other questions for Josh? Go ahead and close the public hearing. Brings us to Bill 7711. Motion for first reading by title only.
Cook.
motion by Councilwoman Cook, second.
Ragsdale.
Second by Councilwoman Ragsdale. Councilwoman Cook, please present the bill.
Thank you. Bill number 7711, an ordinance providing for the rezoning of a certain tract of land located at the northwest quadrant of Veterans Memorial Parkway and Winged Foot Drive, and the southwest quadrant of Veterans Memorial Parkway and Thornbury Crossing Drive, and 1,001 Bryan Road owned by O'Fallon Playfield Commons from C-2 General Business District to C-2 General Business District Sports Tourism Overlay District.
Thank you. Brings to Bill 7712. Motion for first reading by title only.
Ragsdale.
motion by Councilwoman Ragsdale, second.
Cook.
second by Councilwoman Cook. Councilwoman Ragsdale, please present the bill.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Bill number 7712, an ordinance granting a conditional use permit to the owner of O'Fallon Playfield Commons LLC to allow a banquet hall under certain conditions on a certain tract of land near Bryan Road and Veterans Memorial Parkway at the proposed O'Fallon Sports Complex within the city of O'Fallon, Missouri.
Thank you. Brings to Bill 7713. Motion for first reading by title only.
Cook.
motion by Councilwoman Cook, second.
Ragsdale.
second by Councilwoman Ragsdale. Councilwoman Cook, please present the bill.
Thank you. Bill number 7713, an ordinance granting a conditional use permit to the owner of O'Fallon Playfield Commons LLC to allow indoor recreation under certain conditions on a certain tract of land located near Bryan Road and Veterans Memorial Parkway at the proposed O'Fallon Sports Complex within the city of O'Fallon, Missouri.
Thank you. Brings to Bill 7714. Motion for first reading by title only.
Ragsdale.
motion by Councilwoman Ragsdale, second.
Cook.
second by Councilwoman Cook. Councilwoman Ragsdale, please present the bill.
Thank you. Bill number 7714, an ordinance granting a conditional use permit to the owner of O'Fallon Playfield Commons LLC to allow a food truck park under certain conditions on a certain tract of land located near Bryan Road and Veterans Memorial Parkway at the proposed O'Fallon Sports Complex within the city of O'Fallon, Missouri.
Thank you. Next is, oh, wait a minute. There we go. Turned the page too quick. Next is public comment to consider approval of an ordinance granting a conditional use permit to the owner of Caledonia Flats to allow residential dwellings in a non-residential structure under certain conditions on a certain tract of land located at 211 Rush Way within the great city of O'Fallon, Missouri. Someone here to present this?
Good evening, councilmembers and mayor. My name is Steve Valentine. I am here to represent Caledonia Real Estate Holdings. My address is 4 Research Park Drive, St. Charles, Missouri 63304. Tonight, we are presenting a mixed-use project. This project should seem familiar to all of you. We were here as recently as this past summer. It did not pass. There were some very clearly defined objections by the council, and we feel we've addressed those in this offering, this revised proposal. And so, we are here to present it this evening. We are also working with Kukar, which is the same management company that we are using for the Cambria Hotel, which is the project that was most recently approved on the adjacent parcel to the one we're talking about this evening. It is a mixed-use project, 96 apartments with 13 for-sale condominiums, and a first floor that consists of retail space as well as covered parking space. There's a total of 232 additional parking spaces added to the site. The site is a mixed-use parking site, so these will be added to that pool. There are, of the 232, however, 26 that are covered spaces that are within the footprint of the building, and those are intended exclusively for the use of the owner-occupied condominiums. And that is allowable because they are within the structure. There is, as I mentioned, some commercial space. There are 6,000 square feet. Unlike last time, where we were still soliciting users for this space, this go-around, we have definitive users for this space. That was one of the concerns previously, was that it might not become an occupied space. And the fiscal impact study for this project remains a net positive. I have a slide here to go through that. Over the duration of the project, it does exceed the one-to-one ratio as it comes in at a 10 and 1/2 to 1 ratio with a net projected revenue of $11.7 million. That was also done, we believe, relatively conservatively, but when it came through so favorably, we weren't going to argue it. This is the site. Again, this ground here, just below the red area, is where the Cambria Hotel is going, which, again, is just north of the Rush soccer fields at the Caledonia site. This is the site plan, showing not only the proposed parking, the building footprint, as well as some green space. We are trying to maintain some green space to have areas, obviously, for those folks that reside here to be able to take their pets and do their The elevation should look familiar. We are using the same architect as the Cambria Hotel. We are looking to have a cohesive look and feel. I think it's better depicted in this slide here, showing common themes, common colors, common structure. We are looking for a common and cohesive look as you look down that dividing road. The Cambria colors are defined, and so, we are proposing to just simply match those at this point. Some elevational slides for those that want dimensions, but again, it is retail and parking on the first floor, four floors of apartments with 13 condominiums, penthouse condominiums on the top floor. This is a rendering of what a typical apartment space would look like. It is a mixture of one-bedroom and two-bedroom apartments, with the majority being one-bedroom. This is the typical footprint and layout for what the apartments would look like, a one-bedroom versus a two-bedroom. Getting into the mix of the product lines, as you can see, primarily one-bedroom, as 88 of the 96 are one-bedroom. There are eight two-bedrooms. Square footage is listed here. Haven't got to the condos yet. I'll get to that chart in a second. Typical living space in one of the top-floor condos. Typical floor plan and layout of those condos. They do vary in size. We have three primary offerings, the bulk of which are at 1,550 square feet. There is a larger end cap unit at almost 1,700 square feet, and there are a couple of smaller units, primarily driven by the elevator bank and stair bank. Some key components of this project. The lobby does have a two-elevator system, one which is exclusive to the owner-occupied units on the top floor. There is mail kiosk and pickup area in a lobby on the first floor. However, in that lobby, it will not be a staffed and occupied lobby. It is, all the leasing and operation will be run out of the Cambria, which is, again, just across the street. The amenities that exist within the hotel will be accessible to all the residents of this. So, the pool, the workout facility are open to the residents of this building. One of the items I failed to point out, in the parking, covered parking area, is also a bike storage room. We want to continue to promote some outdoor usage of this area. Slides of the pool, gym. Really looking at that first-floor plan, this is what I was talking about with the bike room. Down here at the one corner, this is the 26 covered parking spaces. This is the centralized lobby with the elevator bank. This will be your mail kiosk and package pickup and delivery area, Amazon, et cetera. As you move to the other end of the building, there are two defined tenants at this point. One is Buttermilk, which is a primary breakfast and lunch restaurant. I've got slides on that. And then, the other end is a virtual shooting simulator. In this middle section here is a shared kitchen, as both entities will have kitchen food offerings. This square footage of each one of those spaces listed below. These are some slides of a comparable simulator establishment that we've been to and seen. The simulator space will also have a large retail component, not only from a hardware perspective, but things like hats, t-shirts, et cetera, will be offered in for-sale in the space. Additionally, we intend to be able to host training classes. These are some of the various components of the virtual shooting range. It's very realistic, but it's also equally safe. As such, there's no need for the live ammunition, which allows us, again, to have food and beverage service there and have no concerns. Here are some typical slides of what the Buttermilk Biscuit Restaurant will look like. One of the advantages, again, of specifically calling out for a breakfast and lunch establishment. One of the items that is very important here is parking. It has come up most recently in the planning and zoning. We do have enough parking for this particular project. We have been working with Hanson, the professional engineer that was recommended to us by the city of O'Fallon.
You had a minute and a half, sir.
Yep. They confirmed previously verbally that we were going to be good relative to parking and in compliance, but as of even this morning, we received in writing that we do have adequate parking at this site. Landscape plan, it's the exact same plantings that we proposed for the hotels. So, again, that we match. We have a cohesive offering. Typical slide of a dumpster. And the end.
Questions for Steve? Seeing none. Steve, you would step aside. Mr. Deenoff.
Thank you very much, members of the city council. First of all, I'd like to start out by saying I hope and pray that there's no tax incentives and no tax abatements, no creation of special districts, which would be additional taxation and sales tax to our residents. We need to stop that format and that type of thinking. I'm opposed to this application because we're reducing and cutting commercial and retail space, and we're giving it up for parking, and that's ridiculous. We're shooting ourselves in the foot by giving in, and it's due to two council members, because they wanted to kill the last bill, which I thought was a great project with the retail spaces, which will generate sales tax that we much desperately need. This is not a fair situation. We are top-heavy residential. You paid $136,000 for a comprehensive land program or recommendation from a consultant, and we have 70% residential, or 20% commercial, and 10% industrial uses. The parking here is of major concern. If you take 1.5 cars for the 164 units, plus the condos, and then you put in the 75 guests for the two restaurants, you're going to need at least 300 parking The studied lack of parking, I just don't think the 216 parking spaces are enough. I would recommend that the applicant watch the Missouri Transportation Commission, where I brought up this subject, to our state transportation commissioners at the January 8th State Transportation Commission meeting. And there was a discussion, because he wants to buy property near the roundabout and the mobile gas station. And instead of waiting years to make that happen, hopefully, we can make that happen in months. And it's been brought to the attention of the district engineer and the MODAC commissioners. And so, I'd like to see that happen, that they gain, buy more property to get more parking spaces. There's an issue with sidewalk connectivity. Again, we're reducing the retail space, cutting 3/4, or half to 3/4 of the square footage. And unless there is a substantial commercial investment to build our economy and support the required city services, in terms of sales taxes, this project is reducing the majority of square footage of retail commercial development opportunities that we sorely need. We, as a city council or city, are shooting ourselves in the foot and going against economic development opportunity and a true mixed-use proposal. We're robbing the neighborhood and our community from sales taxes.
You have 15 seconds.
Pay for police, streets, no removal, street maintenance, parks, and other essential services. And I'd like to see this application go back to the drawing table, and let's get more commercial space for this development and application. Thank you.
Mr. Deenoff, time's up, sir. Thank you. Any other questions for Steve? Seeing none. We'll go ahead and close the public comment portion. Brings to Bill 7715. Mr. Bibb.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules and read this bill through final approval.
Motion by Councilman Bibb to suspend the rules. Do we have a second?
Cascal.
Second by Cascal. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Brings to Bill 7715. Mr. Bibb, do you have any additional comments or conditions you want to put on there?
No. I did want to bring up or point out... I did want to bring up or point out, hold on a second, my iPad turned off, that because we hadn't read it yet, there was going to be a dot one on some conditions that we were working through, but since we hadn't read it yet, the ordinance was updated early yesterday morning. If you look in at the background, just...
Just want to make sure. Motion for first reading by title only.
Okay.
We can discuss what was added after the second reading.
All right. Bibb?
Motion by Mr. Bibb, second.
Cascola.
Mr. Cascola. Mr. Bibb, please present the bill.
Bill number 7715, an ordinance granting a conditional use permit to the owner of Caledonia Flats to allow residential dwellings in a non-residential structure under certain conditions on a certain tract of land located at 211 Rushway within the city of O'Fallon, Missouri.
Motion for second reading by title only?
Bibb.
Motion by Councilman Bibb, second.
Cascola.
Second by Cascola. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Mr. O'Keefe?
Bill number 7715, second reading and consideration for adoption. An ordinance granting a conditional use permit to the owner of Caledonia Flats to allow residential dwellings in a non-residential structure under certain conditions on a certain tract of land located at 211 Rushway within the city of O'Fallon, Missouri.
Thank you. Motion, final passage?
Bibb.
Motion by Councilman Bibb, second.
Cascola.
Second by Cascola. Mr. Bibb?
All right, so I'll start back over. So there was a couple of conditions that the applicant referred to in the Planning and Zoning Commission earlier this month. We're still working through some of those details, and yesterday, the ordinance, yesterday morning, the ordinance was updated, so the background section says revised ordinance is attached, but I did want to read those three conditions out loud, so make sure everybody had seen them. One of them was the apartments will prohibit no short-term rentals allowed, and the minimum rental period of any apartment unit shall be 90 days. In the condominiums, all units shall be owner-occupied for a year before any renting is allowed, and then at that point, the shortest rental term allowed is one year. And then the third is to install speed dips within the roads around the property. A total of three speed dips shall be provided in locations approved on the construction site plan, just to help with the way that the parking lays out, with the development being approved for shared parking, and because how unique this project is with the hotel and the apartment having the synergies between the two, there should be, the intention is to drive traffic crossing each other, so we wanted to make sure that that's being done in a safe way.
Yeah.
We were aware of all three of those conditions, and we've accepted them.
I was going to ask you that. All right. Any other questions or comments? Cast your vote.
The voting's now closed.
Eight yes, zero no. Bill 7715, pass becomes ordinance number?
7171.
7171. Thank you. Ms. Bass? Brings us to Bill 7716. Motion for first reading by title only.
Cook.
Motion by Councilwoman Cook, second.
Ragsdale.
Second by Councilwoman Ragsdale. Councilwoman Cook, please present the bill.
Thank you. Bill number 7716, an ordinance approving the record plat of Progress West Industrial Park, Plat 3, and authorizing the city clerk to attest and certify approval of said plat.
My book says something about double reading?
Yes, the record plat.
I keep forgetting record plats have a double reading. Motion for second reading by title only?
Cook.
Motion by Councilwoman Cook, second.
Ragsdale.
Second by Councilwoman Ragsdale. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Mr. O'Keefe? I keep forgetting.
So do I. Bill number 7716, second reading and consideration for adoption. An ordinance approving the record plat of Progress West Industrial Park, Plat 3, and authorizing the city clerk to attest and certify approval of said plat.
Thank you. Motion, final passage?
Cook.
Motion by Councilwoman Cook, second.
Ragsdale.
Second by Councilwoman Ragsdale. Questions or comments? Please cast your vote.
The voting's now closed.
Eight yes, zero no. No. Bill 7716, pass becomes ordinance number?
7172.
7172. Thank you, Bass. Questions or comments on Resolution 192025D? Seeing none. Motion, second to introduce.
Ewen.
Motion by Councilman Ewen, second.
Cascola.
Second by Cascola. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Mr. O'Keefe?
Resolution 192025D, resolution authorizing a one-year extension of an intergovernmental cooperation agreement between the city of O'Fallon and the city of St. Peters, providing for recycle processing at the Recycle City Facility.
Motion, final passage?
Ewen.
Motion by Councilman Ewen, second.
Cascola.
Cascola. Councilmembers, please cast your vote.
The voting's now closed.
Eight yes, zero no. Resolution D has been approved. No further business. We are adjourned at 8:37.